Alright. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Runnymede Planning and Zoning Meeting. I ask you all to rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I leave that from the Saint. On the notice of this meeting, the possibility of a proposed meeting act has been given by the Turk in the filing matter, posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Clerk's office, and emailed to the retrospect and the current post. The first order of business is swearing in our members for reorganization.
Wow. Do you want to do it out down there, or you guys would like to do it up?
No.
My mom said...
I'll find where I'm at.
Yeah, mine too.
You guys want to stand up?
Sure.
Raise your right hand, and we'll do it everybody at the same time?
Yep.
Alright, so just so everyone knows, we have, well, Harry is not here, Candy, Cleanhamer, class four, Devin Spinella, class four, Charles Buckheim, class four, Kathy Walker...
He's not here.
Not here, and Garrett.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
You guys ready?
Yes.
Just repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Candy Cleanhamer.
Dusalma, swear.
I swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith...
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the Saint.
To the Saint.
And that I will perform...
I will perform.
All the duties...
All the duties.
Of a member of the Planning and Zoning Board...
A member of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Of the Borough of Runnymede...
The Borough of Runnymede.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informal, if that's okay.
Garrett, Garrett, we're having you sit up here, and Charlie, because Garrett's your alternate, and then Charlie, you're going to sit up here.
I think I might have to move it.
Oh, yeah.
She says go to seat short. Well, that's, that's moving going to be crazy.
Yeah, I'll go back.
What about that one?
It's a mixed seat.
Yeah.
Permission to chair.
Well, Charlie, you're probably going to...
I thought Mary was up here, or something like that.
Mary's still on. Because there's a chairman's hiding a lot.
Well, we have a full, we have a full board, we need to drag another chair.
We give out the driving chair.
We only have eighteen seats.
I've got a chair here if they need it.
Ah, okay. We never had nine, we had two.
Not recently.
Alright, so, next order of business is roll call, please.
Yes, Chairwoman Cleanhamer.
Here.
Mr. Orkley.
Here.
Ms. Gushen.
Here.
Mr. Buckheim.
Here.
Mr. Spinella.
Here.
And Ms. Farmer.
Here.
His excuse, Harry's excused.
Mayor Kapatis.
Here.
Mr. Renary.
He is excused.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Excused.
Mr. Masili.
Here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
And Mr. Bach.
Here.
Okay, very good. Alright, the next order of business will be nominations for chairperson. There are a motion on the floor. I'd be to root for the nominee, Candy Cleanhamer.
Second.
Nomination by Mr. Orkley, seconded by Ms. Gushen. Are there any other nominations on the floor? I can attend.
Motion.
Motion, both, yeah, the nominations.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cleanhamer. Abstained. Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Mr., uh, Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Do I have to do the alternates, too?
No. No.
Okay. Okay. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, yes. Six, yes.
Resolutions. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Confident, Jimmy. Uh, next order of business is nominations for vice chairperson. I approve nominations, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Joseph Pobroyd.
Second.
Motion, is there any other nominations on the floor for a vice chairperson?
I make a motion to close the nominations.
Okay.
Second.
Will be a roll call, please.
You made the second, Ms. Gushen.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
And Candy, you made the first nomination, and you made the second, and was that also...
Ms. Gushen.
Ms. Gushen. Vice chair? Chairperson Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Abstained.
Uh, Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Okay. Six again.
Congratulations, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good. Next word of business is resolution for the appointment of second vice chairperson. I'd like to put in a nomination for Deborah Gushen.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for second vice chairperson?
I make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion by myself, and it was seconded by Mr. Orkley. Will be a roll call, please.
Ms. Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Abstained.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, this. Alright, so we're going to do the next group of resolutions together. Resolution 2304, providing for the equipment of solicitor. Resolution 2305, providing for the equipment of engineer. Resolution 2306, providing for the equipment secretary. Resolution 2307, providing for the designation of first, second, and third alternate members. Resolution 2308, establishing regular meeting dates and official newspapers.
So, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2304, to appoint David Rowan as our solicitor.
Second.
2305, appointing our borough engineer, Bob Associates, Steve Bach. Resolution, appointing Secretary Joyce Pentow, 06. And resolution providing for the designation of first, second, and third alternate members to the board. Is that the names or those numbers? Or what does that mean? I don't know what that resolution is. I apologize.
It's the order of it. Yeah, the order of it.
Okay, and then, of course, the newspapers being the carrier.
It does have the names.
It does have the names.
I included the dates in your packet with the resolution.
Okay.
And there's a few odd ones, if anybody cares.
Because of the elections.
We have a problem down in November because of Thanksgiving and the convention, and also in December. So Candy and I, we picked two different, the 29th would be the last Wednesday in November, which is after Thanksgiving, as opposed to the night before Thanksgiving. And the December, the 20th, is what Candy wanted to do, as opposed to, I don't remember that one.
Yeah, it was too close, it was too close to Christmas.
Yeah.
So I told Steve, and he's got us on the calendar, so we should be okay.
Alright, so then I'll continue the motion that has listed it on 07 and 08.
What newspaper?
Retrospect and Carrier.
And the Carrier. We've always known the Carrier.
We can't just do that, we just don't use it because it's so expensive, you know?
Well, the Carrier's easier because you get on quicker. Retro doesn't only advertise once a week.
A lot of the apps are the Carrier.
I always, everyone uses the Carrier.
Everyone reads it. I mean, it does read, you know what I mean? Where there's Retro, Spect, whatever.
Did you second all of them, Kevin?
Second.
Yes, I did.
Roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Gordon, thank you again for...
Thank you, sir.
...in 78 and 82.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
For Steve.
Mr. Bach.
We worked, see, we got this machine well worked on.
And Joyce.
I'm just...
And Joyce.
And Joyce, I'm just noting in the resolution, don't say my name.
No, it doesn't say it in it.
No, you write it, they write it in.
No, it does, okay.
Why did you take that out? I just, I just referenced the dates.
Well, Mr. Rowan's name is in that.
Well, he does the resolution.
She's always sure, I didn't want to keep her down.
Gordon, thank you very much.
I'm glad you read the resolution.
I just did.
Okay, we have some resolutions that we need to approve under all business. What I think I'd like to do first, Mr. Rowan, is, um...
Steve?
Oh, yes, get that. Next order of business would be to approve the minutes from the November 30th and the December 12th meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Entertained a motion to approve. The motion to approve minutes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, what we can do at this point is, Mr. Rowan, being Mr. Wazak is not here, we'll seat our first alternate, because Council matters seat, and Mayor needs to step down for the bearings. So...
He's not here.
Steve? You're talking about the application?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, yeah.
The applicant's not here?
No, no, sure.
What?
I just figured we'll seat, we'll seat the alternate until they show up.
For the, just for the resolutions?
Yes.
Vote on the resolutions.
Yes, the resolutions. Vote on the resolutions, and then if they show up, then it's fine.
Yeah, show up, we're here.
So Sharon, you are voting for this evening?
Okay.
In Harry's spot.
Okay.
But you can only, there can only be seven people voting, so there's, will be, you don't, you don't move if you don't want to, because the applicant's not even here.
Oh, okay.
But as a formality, as a thing of housekeeping, I just wanted to put you on as the alternate on record.
Sure.
Okay. Resolution, Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, Resolution 2222, this was a property located at 23 Forest Avenue, block 141 minus seven, application in Nico Zep. This was a bulk variance for permission to construct a 24 by 26 accessory building, which is essentially a garage. Just need a motion to approve. That was with conditions.
Yes.
And I would presume if those conditions are not met, that the zoning officer or the building, whoever issues those building permits...
It'll go through zoning.
We'll make sure all those conditions before issuing a permit.
Zoning has to approve.
Yeah.
I make a motion as, based on those conditions. I'll second that. Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
I'll second that.
Alright, roll call, please, Joyce. And if you didn't, if you didn't vote on this, um, application, you can't...
You have to abstain.
You have to abstain, okay? Just say, I understand.
Chairwoman Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Abstained.
Mr. Spinella.
Hey, uh, yes, but I just want to make sure the one condition that I had brought up when we originally approved it...
The trailer?
Yeah, it's in there.
I think the trailer's already been signed.
It is? Okay, yes.
I remember it was, I knew you said something to the police also, so...
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Farmer. You were up for that one? Okay. Okay. And I abstained. Mayor Kapatis.
Yes.
Did you check, were you there for that?
I was, I don't think I voted. I was sitting here.
But you were an alternate. And I was actually here, but I was in the room.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
We have enough.
Okay. Okay, resolution 22 dash 23, Mr. Rowan.
Yeah, this was a, for property located, 1719 Blackworth Pipe Block, 46 lots, 1, 1, 0, 1, 2, and 2, 0, 1. This was for a minor subdivision, and a, for a used variance to continue residential use on the second floor of the buildings in question. The attorney, Mr., geez, I forget his, did send over deeds, subdivision deeds, I don't know if he sent it to you, but I, I looked at it and I told him to send it to you also.
Okay.
They looked fine. I don't know if the, you know, the board, he wouldn't sign until...
We just have to check the, yeah, we just checked the legal description.
Yeah, and they look fine.
Were they creating block and lots, so was that done?
Yeah, so they had to consolidate, and they had to...
I think that the one is going to be now Lot 1 and the other one Lot 2, but our assessor will work along with the...
We need evidence that they contacted the assessor, and the assessor designated the lot, so...
It did say on the lot, it said Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Just, if you could forward the email...
I don't know how many hours.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the resolution, is read.
Second.
Roll call, please, Joyce?
You make the second, Dennis.
Yes.
Ms. Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Abstained.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Abstained.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Kapatis.
Abstained.
Just for the boards, it sounds like I'm doing legal work online. So legal, a legal description is the bearings and distances of a piece of property when it's subdivided. So it's north a certain degrees, east, and those type of things. So I'm reviewing the legal descriptions as an engineer surveyor. I'm not doing, right, the form of the, just so the board knows what, what a legal description is.
Thank you. Resolution 22 dash 24, Mr. Rowan?
Okay, this is an application that we heard for 812 Runnymede Chicken LLC. Premise is located at 800 812 814, or Blackworth Pipe Block, 35 Lot 7, 701 and 702. This was an application for approving a conditional use variance, as you may recall. The Popeyes Chicken wanted to add another lane, or no, was this Popeyes Chicken?
Yes.
Another lane, two driving lanes, which is really cool.
Entertained a motion to adopt the resolution, is read. I make a motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Orkley, second of a minute, and Mr. Spinella, will be a roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Abstained.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Abstained.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Abstained.
And the next resolution is 22...
Okay, I'm four.
Okay, it's four.
Yeah, it just has to be the majority of the public.
Yeah, that's our handle.
So, it's grass.
Right, resolution 22 dash 25.
Uh, this was an application for preliminary final subdivision by D.R. Horton, block 149.01, Lot 1. As you may recall, this was a major subdivision, creating a total, I believe, 102 lots, 96 will be reserved for townhouses, and the other four, or the other six lots will be for, for improvements and parking. There were conditions placed on the approval. I did receive from council, and I believe I forwarded to Joyce, the Declaration of Protective Penance and the HOA, Homeowners Association, and creation of that in the agreement, and I believe I got it to you, too.
We have that, we have printed it around.
Okay, I reviewed them, I told the attorney that they satisfied the conditions put on the, the, uh...
The board.
The board. And they were very thorough. It was a very, very good declaration in Homeowners. Seemed, these folks seemed pretty straight.
You know, they're right.
Yeah, they seemed pretty straight, so... Pending Steve's file review, you know, he advised me they were fine, and satisfied the conditions being proposed.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 22 dash 25?
Make a motion.
Second. Motion for Mr. Spinella, second of Mr. Orkley, will be a roll call, please.
Chairwoman Cleanhamer.
Yes.
Mr. Orkley.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim.
Abstained.
Mr. Spinella.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer.
Abstained.
Yeah, that was the symbol.
Yes. Yes.
And Mayor Kapatis.
Yes. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Okay, and the, let's see, applicant is not here for our new business.
Joyce, did he public, did he give proof of publication? Was there a date in here? I wonder if he was confused and thought this was another night?
I don't know. I never remember that thing, do you? Mr. Pat Shallow?
There's nothing in my file here.
Well, he's supposed to be, publication, yeah, it's on the agenda. The, have you, any of the green cards, nothing?
No.
How about, has he noticed following the carrier?
No. This is back in line, I don't have to go put everything in here.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it. Maybe just maybe calling and saying, he's got to publish, and...
He's got to renotice.
He's got to renotice.
If he noticed before, he has to renotice.
Yeah. And whatever, what's on the agenda for February.
Nothing's up.
Okay. Next order of business is, good and welcome there, at this point in time, we're opening a meeting up to the public, anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard.
See, we're working the public.
I would like to make a motion for a roll call.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Orkley, second of my, Mr. Spinella, to put public portion all in favor. Aye. Okay. Anybody else need to over this evening? Mr. Bach and I spoke today, we're going to try to get that meeting set for sometime next month, so we can try to, you know, get some, some motions, some parameters in place for, uh...
Coordination.
Basically, who's doing what in the construction office, who's doing what in the enforcement, and, because apparently there's a bit of, um, a bit of overlay, who's supposed to be doing what, and we just want to be clear on that, so, um, I have, Mr. Orkley and Mr. Spinella volunteered to be on that, on that meeting, it can be three of us, so it'll be myself, Mr. Orkley, and Mr. Spinella, and of course, Mayor will be there, Mr. Bach will be there, and...
Is there anybody else in council that you want to do?
I'll ask, but...
So you advise, who else?
I mean, Ms. Callum usually takes care of code enforcement, if you want her involved.
So it'd be you and Ms. Callum.
If that's an issue, one of the issues when we brought up is code enforcement.
Yeah.
But they, for this board, my hearing that one of the issues, not just code enforcement, is, what, what Mr. Rowan said is that the resolution has to be reviewed by the zoning officer prior to construction happening. That's what I'm hearing, is where some of the, some of the, the drop off is. So, once again, my own personal experience, going in front of boards all the time, I know that you guys go in front of boards, one, proof of advertising and notification must be provided before you can get on the agenda. So that's my experience with that. Number two, is the resolution typically on a zoning application, the applicant files on a zoning application, it says, did this application come in front of the board? And so that resolution is usually attached to your application. So when I get a variance for a sign, I submit the variance that I received from the municipality, so that the zoning officer knows that I did go in front of the board, and then his job is to compare what was approved by the board with what's there. My experience with in borough engineers and construction is, the borough engineer takes care of site work and all the exterior stuff, the construction department takes care of pretty much everything inside. Is that accurate?
If it's a bugged, if it's a, uh, a development that requires site development, and they have performance guarantee, the engineer gets involved, single-family houses, sheds, garages, pools, we don't get involved, everything's done by the construction office, the co-officials.
The zoning official or the construction officials?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, the only thing I will say to everyone, if you're aware of how construction works, you know, you, you might show on a survey showing where you're going to put the fence up, and the zoning officer approves it based on the drawing, but the construction official doesn't always, doesn't always know where the meets and bounds are of a property, so he's only looking at the depth of the footing, things like that, how it's constructed, he doesn't necessarily know that it's supposed to be somewhere. So there's, where's sometimes the disconnect.
Does that show on the survey, where you go without?
So surveys aren't as easy to read as you think they're easy to read. Uh, you know, for example, you know, knowing that it's supposed to be two feet off the sidewalk, I agree with you, would be pretty obvious, but, you know, we've had, we've had But, you know, we've had, we've had issues like that. I will tell you that even myself, I put a sign up in Whiting Township, if you guys know where Whiting is. And the someone, and I believe it was the construction, the construction company, did a final survey of the property, and my sign was hanging over the property by two feet. Because I didn't dig the foundation, the contractor dug the foundation. I only set the pole and set the sign. Well, I'm, if anybody knows where Whiting, New Jersey is, it's in middle Route 70 and 72, it's middle of a field. And so when the surveyor came out, says the sign's hanging over two feet, I had to go out there and rotate the sign to keep getting on their property. Now, that happens every once in a while. It's happened to me twice in 31 years, where someone caught that the sign wasn't proper. So these aren't all perfect, you know. The only thing I'll say is I agree that that issue that you're bringing up has to be, has to be done. And I would say it starts off with forms, it starts off with, you know, these clean, good resolutions, and everybody agrees that the resolutions are done, then just follow it up on them. You know, and then the other thing I will say is, since I've been more involved in a lot of this, the attitude has not been to be so lenient. You know, we allowed for a lot of TCOs in the past. That attitude is real, Mr. Bach's shaking his head. You know, we're pulling back on TCOs. The only reason we'll give somebody a TCO now should be if something is of non, you know, and I mean, in importance, it's not necessarily, for example, something may be an interior issue that they're waiting on some picture to show up, not because they haven't finished their curbs and sidewalks. And, and, you know, things like that.
Seems really why we stopped doing informables.
But remember, it's only as good as the employees you have working for you. So, you know, the people who work for the Barrow, once again, if they miss something, that's going to cause, that can cause us problems.
What repercussions do we have when we issue a TCO? Do we set parameters on it?
So the construction official can send a TCO typically for 30 days with, and he's supposed to hold up, you know, but once again, we have a TCO that lasted two and a half years.
TCOs notoriously are unenforceable because the CO is issued by tactically the department who are the payers, TCA, who our board officials tactically work for. And if someone starts occupying an enjoyment, they're going to go in and if you try to take the TCO away, they can go right to the courts again, or show cause of why, why did you issue a TCO and why are you stopping now? So my recommendation will be.
Yeah, but isn't that written on there? When they give them a temper, oh, there's got to be some, Steve.
It says they have to finish what they're supposed to finish.
It says that.
Oh, what Steve's saying is, and I agree with him, the court is never, if you feel that the person's allowed to occupy, then you've allowed them to occupy.
So then we don't give them.
That's what we're saying, but we had a previous, I'm your policy, I'm saying throughout the Barrow, to be more open to that, and it's caused us a few problems.
The only thing that should be done for a TCO is that they have landscaping or vegetation, like grass or something like that, that is, like, topside. But I shouldn't, I wouldn't even give a TCO to a landscape, only like tops of themselves. That's the only thing that is, gives someone a different.
Now, what Mr. Bach has also mentioned, everyone, if there's a performance bond and a maintenance bond, Barrow has a little more ability to go after someone and say, well, we're going to go after you bond to finish the work. So to give everybody a little bit of backstory, remember the last development that we had in Cali Court? The generator wasn't put in. We threatened to go after the bond, and the Barrow was going to put the generator in. Just to give you some idea, whenever the Barrow does anything, it costs a lot more money. So it moves people to do it on their own than for us to do it, because if we do it, it's going to cost usually double, or it's going to cost someone else. Because we had prevailing wage, we had to follow, you know, government contract. So we're doing a better job, but I, one thing I did want to say to this board, first of all, I wanted to thank everyone for doing this, because I don't know if you guys understand how important this board is to this municipality, to all towns. I was supposed to go in front of Gloucester Township, and they couldn't get a quorum. Now, Gloucester Township is eight times the size of this, and they didn't have enough members to show up to have a quorum. So they pushed all the meetings back in November, which doubled the meetings in December, which pushed me back to January. Now, things cost, things cost money, and it's, it's, you know, now, once again, they weren't breaking the wall, it is what it is. I mean, an applicant can withdraw if they don't feel that they want to postpone. But when the board does it, it's difficult. So that's why we're having more alternates, more members to hopefully do this. But, you know, we had a busy year last year with these things. Now, I will let everyone know, is even though we approve things, it doesn't mean they're going to happen. So remember, there's still other variables. I think I talked to the chairperson, you know, the apartment complex that we approved on Clemens Bridge Road, they now pulled back. They have the property up for sale, trying to sell it with the approvals. Well, that doesn't mean anything, you know. So that, that changed. So all these things that we're doing, the environment out there, people spend all this money and come in front of the board, they can do it. And they did all that work, and now she has it up for sale. So that is, we know anybody's got it for sale, I think they're priced a little too high.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the current thing. But what you guys do is important, what's going to be happening in the next year, you know, like you said, this day's in. This is an example of that the environment, I believe, is good for our community to review these things. Now, don't get me wrong, this board has to realize the decisions you make are forever. Council can change the street and make it one way, and then change it the next year and change the direction of the street. You approve a building, it's there forever. The use is there forever. So I think it's very serious. I think we have to rely on our professionals to make sure these applications are good and strong, and then do a good job asking questions and looking at it. So what you guys do is important. You know, we've got these redevelopment opportunities coming up. La Quinta is extremely close to becoming, coming in front of this board. We have a warehouse on Ninth Avenue, which will also be coming in front of this board. We have the car wash, which will also be coming in front of this board. So these are the things that, you know, all that back office stuff has to be done first, the advertising, getting stuff ready with our engineer, before they come in front of this board, and then you guys reviewing it and making sure that it's, it's going to work, because some of these things get very tricky. You know, I always appreciate the chairwoman always visits the sites and walks the sites. You know, I would, I would ask all of you, if you can, to at least take a look, because Dennis, you know, when you walk and you see a tree or a driveway or something like that, it means a lot. So, but on the other hand, let me warn you that I've been in meetings where the board says nothing, and they vote on something. I'm going to tell you, my own application, I had 17 variances, they asked me zero questions. The same night, here in front of Berkeley Township, to put a sign up, and we wanted to increase the size of the sign because the Dollar Tree went from 10,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. So their ordinance didn't allow for doubling the size of the sign, so we said, but the store's doubling, we want to double the size of the sign. We were there for 90 minutes, talking about how the loading dock, which had nothing to do with the sign, the cash registers. So the board was not focused on the real questions. So that's the only other thing I would also advise, hopefully the chairwoman and our council corrals us and corrals the public. But we had that gentleman here who was heckling us. I do not friggin' remember that.
Yeah.
Did that?
Yeah, no. The chairwoman is much more lenient than me.
Is that the one I had to correct?
Were you there for that one?
I was told, I was told by Chief Sam Paulsy that he sings to him every, every day. He goes, so.
He even found me before the meeting, and I had to get away from him. I'm a happy guy, but I have a short temper, I should stay away from him. And then he's like, here, then he jumped on us.
I got big shoulders.
So, but this board also, just to bring us back, you know, the chairwoman of this board has said to us the standards and the policies that we need to have, you know, council needs to know from this board, changes that need to be made. You know, one other quick one, you know, Gloucester Township used to not, they had neon signs in their town. Neon signs was more, neon signs were more popular. And it was actually the board recommended back to the council to change the law, to say, you're making people come in front of this board that didn't need to come in front of the board. And that's something I would argue, if the board's always granting variances, then we should reevaluate, why are we making people come in front of here? I don't think we should just drag people here and spend money and do these kinds of things. I agree, we can't go back to these workshops, because I think that we're being taken advantage of. But at the same time, we can change a rule that is more understanding of the circumstances. There's no reason to drag someone in front of.
So usually what we do is we keep track of all the boards that we represent. If there's similar and multiple applications for the same thing, this board really has not experienced that.
No.
We don't have the same fence vermin, or the same pool vermin, or the same shed vermin over and over again. We do not have that. So I think our ordinance is in, yeah.
We'll see that other municipalities, where they're constantly bringing people to the same thing.
Well, case in point, we did increase the allowable height on the garage.
We did, because we thought that that was a little too short.
The thing, they were a little bit too short, so about maybe three or four years ago, we increased that. You know, we changed, we changed the 40-year rule for no drive-ins, you know what I mean?
Drive-ins and outdoor dining?
Yeah, outdoor dining and stuff. So we have to allow, we have to keep allowing as the world allows, because, you know, people are just going to keep going if we don't, they're going to keep, go right down the Blackworth Pike and dance us by. You know, so we have to do whatever we can do to have them.
So the only thing I want to remind everybody is, it is important to file your financial disclosure forms. They're very simple, and one thing I'll tell you is, once you fill it out once, it actually remembers your application.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do it all over again.
You just go online.
Genius, really, it took them 25 years to figure that out, to do that. And then I believe there is a course that new members have to take.
Correct.
And it's a positive thing to understand the rules of how the board works and things like.
You'll let us know when we're.
Joyce, there is a.
Yeah, I'll send you the link. It was an online course during the pandemic, I don't know if it still is.
Hopefully it's still.
And new members, if you ever have a question, call me. Call me, that's what you think.
That's what you're hearing.
Yeah.
One of the things that would be, yeah, would be helpful as a new member, if I could get an email with everyone's cell phone and mind, so if I want to contact somebody, I have that number.
Just remember, you can't really, we can't really discuss an application without members, laws in process. But if you had a question on a technicality, if another member who's maybe, who's been on the board longer, if they can't answer it, call me.
It's the same when I was on the board of bed, you can't discuss any issues until you have a board.
Right.
I've realized that, yeah.
And another good thing I've noticed that we're doing is, when we do approve something, don't be afraid to say why you're approved. Sometimes just a number of dads vote, yay, I'm voting for it. Don't be afraid to firm the record, I think it is, you know, a benefit to the community, et cetera, et cetera, especially on D variances. Because if, we've never had, we've only had one appeal here in like 12 years.
Twenty-five years, right?
Yeah, except that one, you know, where the two people were fighting.
Well, that was, that was a personal.
Yeah, that was a personal.
Crescent Avenue, and that's.
But I know the judge made a comment during that thing, you know, that, not for a big, but, you know, I want to see the members.
Crescent Avenue. I think, Dave, you're talking about Clemens Bridge Road. The judge one who kicked it back to the board.
Yeah.
But Crescent Avenue was arbitrary and capricious.
There was a third one.
What was the third?
Salas, yeah. He came in and did this for.
Oh, I was on the board.
He wanted, for this.
For the town unit, yeah.
Ah, because you, that was before.
I actually surveyed that for Salas.
Oh, you were surveying back then?
For him, back then.
He lost.
So let me just tell you, just a quick one.
Where did he build apartments?
Because I remember the Crescent Avenue. So the reason that Mr. Lomastin, Mr. Renary, and I can't vote on these, on these D variances is because the applicant has the right to appeal to us. So in that particular case, the applicant was denied and sued the Barrow. And at that point, I was young and ambitious and was a sucker, and every time something came up, I took it. So they said, well, who's going to handle this lawsuit? And we had to pay for a deposition of what happened at the meeting. And the term is correct, it was considered arbitrary and capricious, because the board had set all these standards to Mr. Palmyra. Mr. Palmyra agreed to everything. You want to plant trees, yes. You want to get the sewer line, you're yes. He didn't say no to anything. And then the board turned around and voted no. Do you remember that?
No.
You were, you were here for that one? Set all these standards, he agreed to every standard, and then they voted no. You were on the board back then either. So I'm reading, I'm reading this, I'm reading this transcript, and I got to make fun of the notes, he called, turn that damn camera on. So, so the attorney at the time forgot to swear in all the, all the, all the witnesses, and then said, can you all come back up and say everything that you sentenced to true? This was in the deposition. Do you remember that? I know, I can't say it. So, just so you know, the council did not defend that lawsuit, we allowed the judge to make his decision. And the judge came back and said that the board set all the standards, and then you voted no. And he allowed them to build those two homes.
But you know what?
He was right, I think.
The judge was right.
Yeah.
But you know what, you're allowed, you're allowed to vote no. You're still allowed to vote no, but the idea is, like, if, you know, if I have something that I feel is a little bit of a gray area, I'll say, I'm going to vote no, because I don't believe that this, you know, 70-foot frontage is in concert with the rest of the tax map and blah, 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 blah. And you give your reasoning, so whatever does go to court, you know, you can say, whether they agree to everything or not, if you still, I mean, we are still the plan you follow in this town. So we're still allowed to vote no, because we're voting our conscience and, you know, what we believe to be the best interest of the town. So you're still allowed to vote no, but when it's, whenever I think something's a little gray area, I always try to make a comment as to why I'm voting and the affirmative or not, because of that particular application.
And a lot of times, if it is appeal, I find, and Steve, you probably can figure this out, if the court sees something wrong, they'll send it back to the board with instructions.
That's good.
And the judge will say, Moore, this is what you have to do, please review, review this de note. And then you're seeing what the, the court is saying, what you should be doing or what you should be looking at. You just follow their directions.
And then I heard something about the master plan. Steve, are we getting close together? Are we a year or two away from that review?
I have it pinned up on my credence.
You have it on there?
I don't know.
I have to look too, I have certain things on my calendar.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't want to miss that, we don't want to miss that.
So just so everyone, the new members, every seven years, we're obligated to review. This board is obligated to review.
It's only 10 years.
Oh, they check.
They jason from 6 to 10.
We can always do it sooner if we want to.
No, we did reopen it not too long ago.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we did a full-blown.
We had to do a reexamination by statute.
But we did the special development.
Yeah, we did redo it for that. But I think it's important for us to review, the world's changing, like we're saying. Do we want to, is there anything that you guys are noticing that we need to, you know, reevaluate and change on master plan? Now, let me make this clear, if this board comes up with a bunch of ideas, they don't implement it. It has to go to the council for implementation. So the first year that I was on, it got done, and councils did not adopt all the standards for townhouses back then,